I only get to do that for a couple more meetings, so I'll get it in. Sorry, we're starting a little bit late. Thank you so much for your patience. We are calling our meeting back into order. May I have a volunteer from our board to read the land acknowledgement?
At Skokie School District 73 and 1/2, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Ojibwe, Ottawa, Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk, Miami, Menominee, Sac and Fox Nations, and Kekapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of dispossession upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of Indigenous peoples, and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present-day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you very much. For all those who are willing and are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now open the floor to public comment. Just a reminder, if you would like to make a public comment, please go to the podium and speak into the mic, introduce yourself. Public comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, everyone. I am Rachel Douglas. I am a special education resource teacher at Meyer. Thank you all for your service to our board. I am here tonight to speak during the public comments because I came across a very hurtful document today that painted a collective yet one-sided picture of the Special Education Department. I would like to offer another side to that picture. As someone who grew up in Skokie myself, I have always thought of this community as a place where we value honesty, partnership, diversity, and collaboration. I felt excited to work in this district because this was the first district of nine that I've been in, where I finally felt that my values and morals as a person aligned. We pride ourselves in District 73 and 1/2 as a place where we welcome all and honor differences, and I believe that the Special Education Department, and specifically Angela Demay, is someone who takes both of those qualities to heart. In this document, there was mention of many failures of our department. However, as someone who works in that department, I'm here to say that I was part of so many successes and growths of so many different children, and that if we're going to mention those failures of our department, we should also mention the many successes and growth that has happened and put that on record. Though I would love to celebrate all of the students' successes that our department has been a part of, due to confidentiality, I am unable to speak about those achievements and successes or experiences at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Lissa Meraldo, and I'm here on behalf of multiple families in the district to comment on the proposed change to the first and last days of school for the 2025-2026 calendar. As working parents, my family, like so many others in District 73 and 1/2, relies on summer camp for childcare. Our summer schedule, including our vacation and our time off work, is set following camp sign-up in early February. This proposed change leaves a 3 and 1/2 week gap between the end of regular summer camp on August 1st and the proposed first day of school. The limited end of summer camps haven't had space since the beginning of February. It is unreasonable to ask the district families to take 3 and 1/2 weeks of vacation in a single month, especially with such short notice. It has also pointed out that many families do not even get 3 and 1/2 weeks off of work. The proposed last day of school leaves no buffer space between the end of school and the start of camp if emergency closure days needed to be added at the end of the school year. Given the district's infrastructure challenges, this is poor planning. Additionally, the proposed start date of August 27th still will not align with the other Skokie districts that are starting August 25th. If the choice is starting 3 days before or 2 days after other Skokie districts, we implore the board to stay with the previously approved first and last days of school and choose to align in future school years. Signed, Lissa N. Phil Meraldo, Odessa Malina and Nick Worth, Ray Moongi, Marina Jones, Katherine McCray, Jenny Owens, Maria Ward, Erica Knuth, Jane Daniel, and Karen Chan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, I am now going to turn the meeting over to our representatives from HYA to share their report and findings from the survey that folks took part in and to give the leadership profile. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jane.
Good evening. I'm Jane Westerhold, HYA Senior Associate.
Can you make sure you speak right into that mic, because if you don't, the people who are Zooming can't hear.
Oh, okay.
It's actually for people online more than the people in the room. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Jane Westerhold, HYA Associate, and this is Ken Arndt, also an HYA Associate, and we've been absolutely delighted to spend time in your district. And tonight, we're happy to share with you many of our findings. And to make the good point here, this is a summary report. Tomorrow, you will have the full report, the full leadership profile report and the survey results on the website, and that's really very comprehensive, but tonight, we want to give you a summary. Remember that our goals were really the why. We needed to get to know your district before we could go out and recruit candidates and try to find the best match. We really needed to understand the why, and that's what drives the entire process. We wanted to learn about the unique histories and all of the great things that are happening in your district, as well as some of the challenges. You know, every district has strengths and every district has challenges, so if you didn't have challenges, somebody wouldn't be doing their job undoubtedly. We really wanted to hear stakeholders' diverse opinions. We wanted to hear the voices of the people that you serve, and we were very fortunate to be able to do that in a lot of different forums. We also have learned a lot over the last 2 months, and we've created a leadership profile report, which we'll share with you tonight. It really helps us to recruit candidates. You might wonder, why do you do all this focus group? This is, we pride ourselves in HYA as that is one of our strengths, really listening to the voices in the community. And that doesn't only help us recruit, it also then guides us in our screening interview questions for candidates, and it also will help us when we meet with the board to talk about the types of things you might be interested in interviewing the candidates about. It's a really useful document for interviewing, but finally, it's a really good document for your next leader. Ken and I both have used these documents when we've been in superintendent positions, and it really guided us. I remember many years later, after being in the district, pulling it out, looking at it again, making sure we were meeting the needs of what our stakeholders wanted. We also had a fairly, what I think, and Ken thinks as well, a pretty good broad spectrum of data collection. Our qualitative, we talked to over 143 stakeholders in your district, we had over 15 focus groups, 4 community forums, and we spoke with 8 individuals, and that included every board member. So that was very, very useful to us. They were honest, open conversations. Every single group had the same questions. We asked, what are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges? What are the immediate and future priorities? What do you desire as far as personal and professional qualities, attributes, qualifications for your next leader? And then we always ask, is there someone on your mind that you think might make a good superintendent for your district? And if so, we will look at that name, we will look at the person's credentials, and we will determine whether we need to move forward with contacting that individual. Quantitatively, you did the survey response, and this is a good response for a district this size. Ken and I recently did another district that was similar in size, maybe a little bit larger, and they were more in the 200 range, and it was a very engaged community, very active. But I think that that is something you should be proud of, that you had that much participation. I would also like to add that we did have this in 5 different languages. However, the responses were really only in English. So, I mean, that might be something worth exploring down the future, why is that the case? So this really then concluded with the understanding that all of the opinions of the participants were heard. We believe that we listened well and we heard. We hope that your stakeholders feel that way. We also want to make sure it's not a representative sample. When you think about how many people stakeholders are in your district, this is not a representative sample. But given that caveat, we want to make sure that we listened and we feel like the participants actually felt like they were heard. So when we came to the qualitative survey, what was interesting to us, and it doesn't always happen like this, but the strengths of the district and what the district is looking for in the next superintendent were almost identical to what the focus groups were saying. And speaking of the focus groups, one thing that I thought personally was really unique is they were across the board very similar. Sometimes you may have a big division of what the teachers say versus what the children say or the parents say, but that wasn't the case here. It was very consistent across all of our groups. So the top strength is identified in the survey by your over 300 stakeholders. Technology is integrated into the classroom. District schools are safe. These are all in teaching and learning, these 2. Teachers personalize instruction strategies to address individual learning needs. Boy, did we hear that a lot unclear in every group. The district engages with diverse racial, cultural, and socioeconomic groups, and that we heard in every single focus group as well. And district technology infrastructure sufficient to support the use of technology in the classroom. And I would say that wasn't as mentioned quite as much in the focus groups, and I think the reason for that is just kind of, it's 2025 and it's assumed that that's going to be happening, but that was just kind of our hunch. And then when we looked, what did the community that stakeholders say they desired in their next leader? Now, later on, Ken's going to talk to you about all of the characteristics and attributes and qualifications that are desired in the next leader, and there are a lot, as there always are. But if we had to put it in the nutshell, and we had to say that the board said, tell us only 5, these 5, I think, really nail it. They are so on target to what we heard as well. Foster a positive professional climate of mutual respect among faculty, staff, and administrators. Provide transparent communication. Recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel throughout the district and its schools. Understand and be sensitive to the needs of a diverse student population and be visible throughout the district and actively engage in the community. And those 5 were just so predominant in every single group and every individual interview that we heard from. So once again, this is a short list of the strengths. You're going to see more of those in the comprehensive report, but we just want to highlight some. The values of having a diverse community, it's just not something you can put into words, and it really is valued here. It's not valued in every district. Sometimes it's more of a challenge in some districts, but, and I've been in the North Cook region as a superintendent, and this isn't a new thing. This has been a long-time history here of really embracing other cultures, and that's certainly something you should be proud of. The dedicated teachers, the passionate, committed teachers, mentioned over and over again, and the support staff was often noted as being extremely caring and nurturing to students. And we also learned that many of the support staff members actually live in the community or in Skokie in the area, and that speaks a lot about your district as well. Now, it's very close-knit, small, that's an advantage, but that also can be a challenge. Everybody knows everybody, everybody knows everybody's business, and if there's a lack of communication on some things, you know that can go south. But generally speaking, it lends itself to a good community feel to have such a close-knit, small district. Your strategic plan was really praised for being robust, and we feel with it going through '29, that will be a great document for the next superintendent as a guiding document. Once again, the highly qualified staff was mentioned, and then the performing arts, especially music band programs. Boy, we heard a lot about those, and Ruth shared with us some awards, and we saw all the awards that have been given to the program. So, congratulations on the fine arts. I'm a big lover of performing arts and fine arts, and I was a band student myself, so I get excited when I see that. The community is very progressive. Once again, this is a new news. This community's been progressive for many, many years. I think that it's open-minded, open to new ideas and thoughts and innovative. And the board and the union have a good working relationship, and that's a plus, particularly heading into negotiations in the near future. And I mentioned that when we start talking to candidates for the position, the first thing they ask, what's the board like? What's the union like? And we are always happy to tell them, if we hear this, that there's a good relationship. Restorative practices have been in place in the schools for student behavior and discipline, although we did hear maybe in some other focus groups that they weren't sure that was working as well as it should, and that's been something we've heard ever since restorative practices were put into place at the state level in a lot of districts. It's really hard to do, and it's not always easily understood. It is a destination district for families. That's something else to be proud of. You have a strong STEAM curriculum and awards project lead the way at the middle school, winning awards for their STEM. These are all things that we use when we're recruiting, and the schools are safe. Now it's indicated there are going to be challenges, and this list is kind of long and they overlap, so I'm not going to go through every one. It's more comprehensive in the report. There seems to be a need for administrative collaboration to be across all levels interdepartmentally. We heard that there could be silos. I mean, we only know what we hear. We haven't dug deep into the district to understand. However, we did hear that this is an area of opportunity for improvement. I put the diversity inclusion up there primarily because of recruiting. To be able to have a staff that really represents the student population is important, and that is an area that's a challenge for this district and any district, but it's something that definitely should be addressed. Government relations, we heard that a more strategic and intentional approach in working with elected officials locally and at the state level could perhaps give some better results. And once again, this communication, communication, not one group didn't mention this. I mean, internal and external communications are critical, and it seems like to us, it would be a really good opportunity to put in a plan for that. So, in the future, you know, some of these things are not rocket science. They can be fixed. This is not, all of these challenges, they have solutions. So that's the good news. They're hard, you know, in the sense that it seems like there are a lot of them, but they're fixable. Leadership and management, I think people were concerned about the turnover in leadership and management, and really desire some consistency and stability in that area. Financial stewardship. Financial stewardship was mentioned a lot with, there are some challenges with maybe a looming deficit coming and possibility of a referendum. These are going to require a lot of financial stewardship. The conflict resolution was mentioned mostly because of lack of communication causing it. Special Ed, Student Services, this was mentioned a lot. We are not really exactly sure what the cause of that is. We think that hearing from one focus group that maybe it was more compassion and sensitivity, another group more communication, we don't know. One of the suggestions that we might consider would be an audit of those services, since we did hear it several times. And then certainly, staff retention. It's hard. It's hard to keep staff. Every district in the country is facing that. So, in order to keep staff, there are some things that can be done. We heard about onboarding, how important onboarding would be, how important professional development is to improve morale among the staff. But once again, none of these things are that far-reaching. With the right leader in place, you'll be able to make sure these challenges are met, I do believe. I am now going to turn it over to my partner, Ken Arnt, Dr. Arnt.
Well, thank you, Jane. And once again, just to remind everyone that our report will be available to the public on the website tomorrow. This is the executive summary. And if the district wants to put this on the website also, you certainly may. But you'll see how this all corresponds with one another. So, right now, what are the immediate and future priorities? So, this is one of the questions that we asked of all the participants, saying, okay, when your new superintendent is hired, what are the things that he or she really need to do the first six months on the job to show the community and the board that they hired the right person? So, don't tell us that you need another year or two to figure things out. No, the first six months, these are the things you need to start working on to prove to the community you are the right fit. And the first one is, they want your next super, a lot of the focus groups said, we want our next superintendent to be truly engaged with us, to know our names, for us to know who he or she is, to know something about them. The teacher said, you know, it'd be nice to have our next superintendent really know what I teach and where I work, because our prior superintendents knew that. So, those are the things. They want the person to be truly engaged with the community and the school's stakeholders. And the kids said the same thing. The students want us to, we want to know our superintendent, and we want to know whoever he or she is to have a smile. See, that's a kid's perspective. Because a lot of times, superintendents, they walk around and everything's just terrible, you know, and oh, jeez. Not our interims, I'm sure that's not happening right now. They also want to make sure that there's strong communication channels, meaning if we send our superintendent an email, we want him or her to respond themselves. Financial oversight and stability. That was loud and clear. The staff is very, very concerned about the financial stability of seventy-three and a half. You've never been in this situation before, and you're deficit spending, and they're very, very concerned about it. The community at large have heard about it, but they do not understand the gravity of that situation. Once again, they want your next superintendent to be very visible. They want whoever this person is to be noticed at the local coffee shop, at the grocery store, whatever. When they show up at school events, to be engaged, to have a smile on their face, and to appreciate the staff and the kids that are there, and just really enjoy the moment. And last but not least, to recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel. Your next superintendent, whoever he or she is, is going to be the person that's going to determine who's going to come into seventy-three and a half. Because a teacher and administrator, they're not going to come into your district unless they know who the quote boss is. And if the boss has the integrity and has the wherewithal that's, you know what, I want to work here, you're going to recruit and retain these people, because they want to work here, because they know the boss is somebody that they trust and admire. So, what are the future priorities? Again, your infrastructure is very well-known. The community knows that you're looking into a referendum. They know the buildings have not been kept up. Lastly, there is a lot of concern with your current administrative structure. Then we also heard from a variety of folks that, you know, our administrators have never been mentored. We hire them and boom, good luck, it's sink or swim. Nobody mentors them, nobody trains them, nobody works with them, and that is a problem. And that's part of the reason why you have such a high administrative turnover. Again, the community wants to see more partnerships. You had these partnerships in years past. You know, elected officials, they knew who you were. You worked together, you did projects together, you did partnerships, you worked with the community, and somehow that has been lost. And last but not least, you know, the only reason we're here is for students. And there is definitely a gap between the academic divide, and that has to be addressed. And it can be addressed if the administration, the superintendent, works with the staff, the teachers, and the parents. Again, this is a partnership. So, what are those desired characteristics? Again, I'm not going to read through all of these, but the big one is, they want this person to be very genuine, to be very sincere, empathetic, listen to us before speaking. When you speak to one group, make sure you say the same thing to the other groups. We know everybody, as Jane just mentioned. But if you're being just ingenuous with one group, it's going to get out to the other group, and then you're going to start questioning, is this person really sincere? Back to the sense of humor, that's what the kids said. So, we made sure that that's in there. And also, somebody that's very visible and warm, somebody that you can respect, because whoever you select is going to be the voice and the voice of seventy-three and a half. The other one, oops, we just went back too far. I just kind of messed it all up. Okay, there you go. Okay, again, be engaged with the community. Crisis management, we heard that also. He said, you know what, there's always going to be a crisis in every school district. Let's just face it, there's always going to be a problem. But when that happens, we want our next leader to show a calm demeanor and not just say, oh, my gosh, the world is falling up. No, that's where a true experienced administrator comes into place. He or she knows how to handle difficult situations. They know to listen first and then act. And they also know to listen to all perspectives. That was the other issue we heard. It seems like right now, certain groups feel like they get more attention than the others. But we also heard that the squeaky wheel unfortunately is getting more attention than they really deserve, because they really don't represent the entire community. But whoever he or she speaks the loudest or screams the loudest, they gets the most attention, and that has to stop. Again, they want somebody who's financially astute. Across every board, we heard that you want your next superintendent to have senior office experience. You want your next superintendent to be a former superintendent. We heard loud and clear, this is not going to be another avenue for a rookie to get job training. Nobody has patience for that anymore. You want an experienced administrator, preferably a former educator, but someone who has proven who themselves to know how to manage and lead organizations and to work with people and not just order edicts. You also would like to have somebody who eventually, after all these other challenges are resolved, work with the staff to improve student achievement. You want an instructional leader. That's very important, but right now, you've got a lot of other things that have a higher priority. You also want somebody who's very sincere, a servant leader, not somebody who's going to say, okay, it's my way or the highway. We heard from the teachers especially, you know, we had some really, really good programs that worked very, very well in the past. And then we had new administrators come in, and they didn't even want to take any time to listen to what the programs were. It's like their idea is better than ours. That's not showing very sincere leadership. You need to work with us. We need to share with you, what is our institutional history? See, that has been lost with all the administrative turnover. And some of the staff and some of the parents told us, you know what, a lot of our problems could have been resolved if somebody would have just said, you know, what did you do in the past? That hasn't happened. Again, they want somebody who's very transparent, trustworthy. But then also, once you get to know us, we want you to lead us, to be a visionary leader. Carrying support communicator over and over and over again. You want somebody who could speak very well, who can write very well, who's also respectful of all different cultures, also someone who can pronounce names correctly. Open feedback. You want somebody who's very positive. The other one is, we want our next superintendent to be somewhat tech savvy, to know how to write emails or to respond to emails. And I'll just leave it right there. Transparent, trustworthy, visible, and approachable. So, what are we doing right now? So, once the board gave us the opportunity to look for your next superintendent, and by the way, right now, we have forty-five applications. We have, Jane, we said just before the board, we have never had that many in many, many years. Now, are they all experienced superintendents? No. We are not interviewing principals. We are not interviewing people that have never been a superintendent. We are interviewing people that are associate superintendents of large school districts, but they had also prior elementary experience. But we're only looking at people that are experienced superintendents, administrators, that can handle this job. Because the community, the board, the staff has told us loud and clear, we want somebody who knows what they're doing and has the wherewithal to help lead us. So, again, we are going to be presenting our recommended slate to the board. This is going to be a closed session next week, next Tuesday. Right now, we have six very, very viable candidates, which we think is going to be very, very difficult for the board to choose from. Again, you only need one. But they are all equally qualified, all with a lot of experience, superintendents' experience of like districts or larger districts. And then eventually, the board's going to have to decide, okay, what's going to be the compensation, the contract, and the benefits package? But first, you've got to find the right people. And so, after the slate of six, the board will interview all six. HYA will not give the board any indication who we think you should hire, because that is only the board's decision. And then it will narrow down to three and then down to one. And hopefully, this will all take place and end up by the end of May, first part of June, so the community and the staff, the students know who their next superintendent's going to be for the next school year. And with that, we thank the board for giving us this opportunity to serve your district. It's been a lot of fun. Actually, I have to share with you that normally, we have groups that are very, very angry. That was never the case in seventy-three and a half. Everybody has been very professional, respectful, and listened to one another. And that says a lot about your community, which is another reason why we have forty-five applicants, because of your history, of your tradition and your reputation, because you respect voices here. And that says a lot right now. That's unfortunately not happening in a lot of parts of our country. Do you have any questions for Jane or I?
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
So, I know that we had it in five different languages, but didn't have representation. So, what do we do to make sure that everybody's voice is heard? I mean, I guess you can't make people speak up, but we have to include everybody, right?
We did have, we did have interpreters at every single focus group session. But once again, those weren't utilized. They were provided not only in person, but as well as the virtual sessions that we had. That's why I said I think it needs further investigation. Is there something communication-wise that's not happening? That, you know, they're not feeling welcome or heard? Not sure, but it's certainly worth investigating.
We also asked our HYA associates, and he said, this is not uncommon anymore, that many school districts provide the survey or interpreters in different languages, and only English-speaking people show up.
Can I ask a question?
All right, let me just finish this about this topic and then absolutely. I led the search in two nineteen, we had the same situation there. So, I think it's very common and not sure what the solution is. Okay, Nelson?
Thank you. Because when you originally opened, I think I heard you correctly in saying that we actually had a more robust response to our survey than some other districts of the same size. So, one of the things I actually think is important to draw attention to, communication has come up here a lot in the presentation. And I think that the district and the communication team did a really good job of trying to make sure that the information made it to the right people in the right inboxes. And this is a great opportunity for those people who maybe did not participate in this going forward when we make the selection to kind of come to those spaces and be in those rooms when these decisions are getting made. Thank you.
Thank you. And in our comprehensive report, we have made note of the help that the staff has provided, your support staff in the district office, as well as the interim superintendents were great help. And, you know, getting the word out, advertising, keeping the superintendent's search page updated, that was great. And we really are appreciative of that. It helped us do our job better.
I have just a clerical thing. You guys mentioned the reports and that they'll be on the website. I just want to say for the public or anyone watching at home that they are currently in public content on our board docs. So, if you want to access this slide deck as well as the more comprehensive report, the public can see that currently on the seventy-three and a half board docs.
Any other board questions? Any of the administrators have any questions about it, since we're already starting to go through this process?
All right. Well, I will say thank you so much, HYA. It's been a real pleasure working with you. I know we haven't stopped working with you yet, but this whole process, I know that we came to you very late in the game, and you really jumped to and helped us move through this process really quickly while still helping us capture, I think, as best a picture as we could. And I think it says something that the focus groups kind of mimicked what the surveys were saying. You know, we weren't getting like really different stories from all the different parts of the district, and I think that's important to understand. So, thank you so much for all your hard work in helping us move through this as quickly as you have. And I'll just update. We have the list of upcoming meetings. When we were in closed before this open session, we came up with a set of three dates for interview dates and times that have been communicated to all the board members, as well as the three new incoming board members. So, once those, you know, are scheduled with the candidates, we'll get those on the books. And as you mentioned, those, just for the public to understand, those interviews will happen enclosed. But we'll be using these documents as a guide to help us choose the next superintendent for the school district. And again, if we don't feel that we've found the right candidate, we'll hit pause and we'll go back to the drawing table in the fall. But we're hopeful, from the sounds of it, that we have six really strong candidates to examine. And so, we're excited to move forward with that and into the next steps. So, any other final comments or questions before that we let them go? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for having the confidence in HYA. We really appreciate it, and it truly has been a pleasure working with your community.
Thank you.
Vicki, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to help the community understand why we're doing it the way we are and why we're doing closed. And that's because we get much more robust applicant pool. So, it's not that we're, you know, trying to, we want to take everybody's considerations into, you know, or considerate, consider everybody's opinions, but it's really important to have it in a closed session so that way, we can get a robust applicant pool. And so, that way, we get you. robust applicant pool, and so that way, we get you the best of the best. Otherwise, people don't apply if, you know, you never apply for a job, and let your employer, your current employer, know that you're looking for a job. So that is the reason.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right. So we have two new business items, one which was already mentioned in public comment. I believe we are doing calendar revisions, in part because Niles North, just for the record, we had our calendar done first. We have a good history of getting our calendar out there ahead of time. But two nineteen set their spring break for a different week than our spring break, even though they did their calendar after our calendar. So there was a proposal to move the spring break. I will say, I do have a question as to why we decided to also adjust the first and last day of school. So if maybe Kane, you could speak to that, cause I wasn't expecting that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think in the last meeting, I included the NSDA guidelines, the NTSA guidelines. So the Nile Township Schools work to have shared calendar windows for specific reasons. In this case, they're all partners with NTDSE, and it has to do with us all partnering with them, and having their staff able to service the kids in our buildings, and, or not in our buildings, at the beginning of school. And so the, the NTSA guidelines ask that we start in that third, that week that we've proposed, the week of the twenty-fifth. So we were a week off of that, and in, so one, it was out of, out of agreement with what we had said we would do, but also it creates ramifications for the students serviced by NTDSE, whether ours or not, or whether they're in our buildings, or our students are not, in that first week particularly. So certainly could have started on the twenty-fifth. I appreciate hearing the other aspects of the challenges of starting that week, and what it creates for families. Kind of like bell schedules, there is not a perfect calendar. So we did want to, when it was pointed out, try to align with the other township schools as much as possible. In talking about a Wednesday start, it was simply a discussion with a couple of administrators, and it's common to, you're, you bring your staff in Monday, Tuesday, and the students, their first week back is not a full week, it's, can feel a little more manageable. The final thing is, I did go back and try to look at the minutes from the meetings in February, I believe, and I couldn't see anything specific about why the calendar was the way it was. Now, the spring break just appears to be, one, because we did ours before Niles. And two, there was also actually just an error in it, where we put the right week on the calendar, but put the wrong week in the writing, and so, you know, this is just a chance to correct that, obviously. But I could not find anything in the minutes or in the board meeting recordings that told me why it was the way it was. So even though the memo that was presented with the calendar before, and the guidelines from the township schools were in with that decision, so that's one of the reasons. If I had seen a rationale, I would have brought that up and revisited it. But otherwise, that's why I proposed it the way it is, so.
Yeah, I mean, we always start on Wednesdays, so that's pretty standard. And of course, I've been on the board so long, I hear, it's like always like, it's always the fourth or the third Wednesday of every August. Don't we have a standard?
I feel like, I feel like it's fluctuated.
No, anyway, whatever.
But can we translate something for people who don't speak school?
Yeah, the NTDSE schedule?
And so I think that's important for people to understand what Dr. Osborne is saying. So because we use NTDSE for related services for our students who, I don't know what they spell out for, Niles Township.
I know what it is, but not everybody watching.
Yes, somebody please, go ahead, Natasha, that's your committee.
Niles Township District Special Education.
Yes. So for our students who need related services, I E O Ts, P Ts, special education, IEP minutes, things of that sort. In order for those students to receive their services, we need to align with the service providers that we use to do that in our schools. So setting the date to make sure that those students can receive their services is going to be a good thing. Even if, for example, I am a parent who, looking at this calendar, will have a child who will be home a good two and a half weeks after I have to report back to school as an educator. That may not be ideal for my family calendar, but it is definitely ideal for my child, who has an IEP, who needs related services. And so as we looked at the HYA report, to talk about one of the areas within this community that we could use and we could grow, is communicating with those government services and those government entities that also set things like the camp calendar. You know, the Park District also has a board, similar to our board, and maybe making our voices heard as a parental community about the ways in which the Park District can support our community and our schools, would be a really positive way to open up another partnership. Because I too, sitting as a board member, am impacted by these decisions, but I also know that children need their services.
Is it possible to move a spring, I mean, is it possible to move the spring break without moving the start and end date? I mean, I agree with the rationale and the reasons given. I do also empathize and agree that moving something, summer plans are done. Like, people have already planned their vacation, people have already planned their, their leaves from work, and so I do feel like it's pretty late in the mix to be throwing a wrench into the start date of school at the same time. So I'm pretty split on that one. I mean, I think the spring break one, to me, is a no-brainer. I can't imagine having a freshman in high school, and a sixth grader, and you can't take them both on vacation at the same time. Bigger than this, to me, is our process going forward about calendar creation. I've always enjoyed living in a district where the calendar often exists for multiple years going out, because I work in a district where it does not, and it has kept me from booking summer stuff that I would like to book. At the same time, if two nineteen is not gonna be ahead of us, and they're not going to follow our lead, which is understandable, then I think there needs to be some sort of, like you were saying, intergovernmental process for that to happen.
Yeah, so I would just say really quickly, a couple of things. I agree there needs to be a process, and it needs to include other agencies. That's what those Niles Schools guidelines were meant to do, right? And so we are trying to work with them in this regard. The other thing is, I would just say, I don't know what the whole process was before, but strangely enough, I've had the job of building calendars in like five different administrative jobs. So I do believe in like steps, you take a calendar to the PTA, you take a calendar to the unions, and you post it, and then you just say, any feedback, right? And so that way, you tend to not run into these things. I agree it's late, it was one hundred percent on my mind, and it was kind of, it's gonna be this, or kids will miss services, and/or we're trying to pay for subs for services, cause those kids will be like, right. And at the beginning of school, for some of the students and the needs we're talking about, that's not a really strong start to the school year. And so I won't lie to you, it was not like, oh, that's an easy decision, I'm just gonna color those boxes differently. So I did have to just think about that, I talked to a couple administrators quickly. Ideally, we would, we'd be talking like a months-long process with multiple stakeholders, where we'd share the feedback, and then say, hey, this is the feedback, and so we will make a calendar that makes somebody unhappy, that will happen, but at least we can go through and say, this is what we did to get here. So we didn't have that opportunity now, but in the future, that's what I would recommend, where you, you're hitting it, multiple stakeholders, bringing it back, so that when the board does vote on it, they already know what everybody has said about it, so that their decision's informed. So I agree with you about the late piece of it, it's not, it's not an easy decision.
I mean, I think that every year, the calendar is a discussion, and I think that we need to make sure that kids are getting their services, especially from the get-go for the first week of school, so I think that that is a thing we need to do. But I do think to, to remember Nelson's point, like, it is also a conversation with our other government agencies, including the Park District, and, I mean, I've had kids in this school district all the way through, and this has been an ongoing discussion about, you know, when, when do Park District programs exist? When they get cut? They seem to change every year for the summer, you're always trying to map it out. And so how can we be more collaborative, all the school districts, with the Park District, to make sure that we have programming available, I think is really important. So that, I would say, is definitely something to make sure we prioritize for next year, as we look at the calendar. So are there any other questions or discussion?
Do we, I guess, is, is starting on the, I understand the rationale, the half week, I ditched that week, I get it, but I guess my concern would be, is it a, would the twenty-fifth be a fair middle ground? Would that give parents fewer days off, having to take fewer additional days off of work that they weren't planning, while also honoring what kids need? They would do their PD on the Thursday and the Friday, and then have the students start on the twenty-fifth? Well, I, I, okay, but that's not a reason, though. I mean, we always do it, I understand that our reason for doing it, but given this is a special circumstance, and we're moving things around, asking people to take two additional days off, I don't understand why that's, like, if that would be helpful, I don't know.
If you would like to make an amendment to the motion, you're more than welcome to. I mean, we haven't made the motion yet, so far, we're just discussing this, right? So, I mean, that is according to Roberts Rules of Order, the process, right? If you wanna make an amendment to the proposed calendar, to have it be, or we could hold back on this and vote on it, because you know what? Well, we could vote on it next week, cause we're coming back next week, and we could have just one agenda item for open, that'd be so exciting. Yet another open meeting.
But does it change the demonstrated need to make sure that our students can receive the services that they need to receive?
If it starts that week, you can get them this, yes.
Okay.
It will, it'll be, yes, yes. The calendar guideline is that week, so we would be okay.
But does that impact, like, I know kindergarten and pre-K, they start at a different time, and this is later?
So in the calendar, it says, you know, kindergarten's the next day, pre-K, we'd have to talk about pre-K, cause right now, it's scheduled to start after Labor Day, so we would just talk and come back with the best recommendation for when we think pre-K should start.
I move to call this conversation to a close, pending more discussion.
Well, we haven't made any motions yet, so you don't have to move.
I motion to call this conversation to a close, until we have more information, so.
Can I actually ask a clarifying question? I think what would be more helpful is, what do you want me to come back with? In other words, so I will go back to, we, there is no perfect calendar, we could literally talk about this until 2026. But if you give me something to come back with that is more responsive to this conversation, then I will do that. But otherwise, I'm not sure what would happen next, and it won't get earlier. So we'll be closer to the start of the year, and so that's an issue too, for planning. So I would just say, if the board could give me direction on what they would want me to bring back on the twenty-second, that would be great, because otherwise, we might be having the same conversation again.
So I think the priority needs to be the kids having access to their resources, right? So they have access as of the twenty-fifth, correct? So the other question is, and the reason I said we always start on Wednesday, is because it is asking our district staff to do their PD on Thursday and Friday, rather than the traditional Monday and Tuesday, which is something that has been the standard in our district. So that was my question about, more about kind of like, do we wanna then check in with our staff unions to say, this is the discussion that happened at the board meeting, is that another point of, point that we wanna ask? Yes, Lily?
Do we know right off the bat, are we extending their year, and therefore, it's gonna mess with the contracts, like?
It will not mess with the contract, cause it's a number of days, but I will talk to, I have had an email with the union president about this, but not about that, but we will talk about it, and I will make sure that I bring back information about that.
Right, because I don't wanna come back next week, and then it's like, we have open, Mike, and the unions all here, saying, why did you change this? No, no offense, we have a good working relationship, as HYA pointed out. So those, I think, are our three priorities, right? Like guaranteeing that our students have access to the services they need to have access to, if we move the first day of school to the twenty-fifth. Second is checking with our collective bargaining agreements and our representatives, to make sure that starting our professional development on the twenty-first and twenty-second is workable. And we can, but we need to vote on this, on the twenty-second, so.
Ruth, don't send out that email.
We will not make any amendments next week, so everybody read your email closely.
So the, is the, what I'm hearing then, is that we're thinking that the proposal, as long as the union is on board, would then maybe propose the twenty-fifth as a start date?
That's what I'm hearing, I should come back.
Great, okay, moving on. So we, for minutes purposes, never made a motion on that, and we're tabling it to next week. Okay, I need a motion to approve, this is maybe not as exciting, I need a motion to approve the paving contract for parking lot work.
I will make a motion to approve the paving contract for parking lot work.
Second. Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Wolfinger. Any questions or discussion about paving the parking lot? Ed, can you make sure it starts on the first day of school, that we pave the parking lot?
Can you start that on the twenty-fifth, please?
Yeah? Okay, awesome.
Anything you guys want.
Yeah, great.
I'm sorry, only the village starts projects in front of our buildings on the first days of school, we don't.
We'll also be working on the air conditioning, so that'll be shut down. But I won't be on the board anymore, so I don't, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. All right, just, it'll be done before the first day of school. And we need a roll call, please.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion to approve paving contract, parking lot work passes. Is that an exciting time? Second round of public comment, you wanna make public comment? This is your last chance to really chime in about the calendar, so if you have any feelings about it, this is your time. Cause we're not making amendments next week. Okay. Okay, so to review, Monday, April twenty-first, you can be back at Middleton, two, seven PM, let's start over. Monday, seven PM, Middleton, Community Engagement Session. Tuesday, April twenty-
Everybody come, please.
Okay, no problem. Closed session, Tuesday, April twenty-second, what time do we know? Are we meeting at six?
Uh, we gotta talk to HYA.
Okay, we gotta confirm the time, but closed session, but apparently also small open meeting session to approve the contract, so there'll be an open meeting next Tuesday. Proposed Finance Committee, April thirtieth. Special Board Meetings, that will be closed to interview superintendent candidates, those dates will be posted this week. Board Reorganization Meeting, that is the, where the old board stops, and the new board begins, May seventh, seven PM, here at McCracken. And then regularly scheduled, May thirteenth, regular board meeting, all right? I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Latasha Nelson. A roll call, please.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn passes, we are now adjourning, thank you very much.